Go ahead, you can.
Oh.
Questions?
Okay.
Okay.
I wanted to ask a question about, oh, actually, I got a couple more questions. I understand that there's been some confusion that we've heard, I've heard as a board member, and I don't even, I just send it back to Joe or to whoever the grid says. But one thing that did come up was there was something about you can be within six feet, but if you have to go closer to get closer to a student, you have to, you have 15 minutes to be within the six feet or some sort of time limit.
We'll let Joe, we'll let Joe speak to that.
And I was kind of curious if he could explain that.
And again, I think that's part of the importance of that parent training and staff training and student training. I believe that's probably part of it.
Yep. So, close contact is defined as within six feet for more than 15 minutes.
Okay.
And so, part of the training that we've described with our staff is the idea that our goal is, our students are sitting six feet apart, that's where we have them designated. However, we know that staff members are going to move closer to a student to be able to help with them, help them with something specific. And so, we talked about the fact that you need to have an internal timer, the idea of, I know I can move closer to have a conversation with you, but at the same time, I also know that I have to reach a certain point at which I'm going to step back. That's where, that definition of close contact then is when I work with the Department of Health. So, when we have a confirmed positive case and I work with the Department of Health, they want to know which individuals have had close contact with the confirmed case, because that's how we determine who are confirmed exposures and determine what other individuals may then need to be quarantined in addition to the isolated sick individual.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Yep.
That makes sense. And then, I wanted to ask a question about distance learning, because I, and I know we're just starting off and there's a lot of kinks that need to be worked out. But a couple of questions came up with regards to the way we're using the extra spaces in the gyms and the cafeterias and mixing class types within one area. And, you know, and the first thing that I'm thinking of is, you know, how are they teaching this way with, you know, in a large room with various groups going on at the same time? Do we have dividers? Are we working on that? I mean, how is that working?
So, with, and this partly goes with the accommodations piece.
Okay.
For our staff who are teaching from home. And so, we've identified that social studies and communications classes, which are not lab-based like science, are, would be in the gym relative to appropriate capacity of that space. So, students would be spread out. They would be work, they would be logged in with their teacher, getting direct instruction, either through a headset or ear pods, so that they are engaging in the content with school.
So, they're, they would be, they're in the gym during those whole, those in-school hybrid days, their teacher isn't in school. So, instead of us having a classroom monitor for every classroom, we've put some students, especially at the high school level, because they're very self-reliant and can handle that, we've put them in a larger space. Mary, I did want to say that you made, you made a statement, you said, "We have a lot of kinks to get out." I'd like to hear a little bit more if there are some kinks, because I'm sure we have a lot of learning to do. But if, if you've heard of kinks, I'd sure like to know that, because I, I think we had a pretty remarkable first day.
I think there's going to be kinks in everything.
Oh, there absolutely will be.
It's going to be smoothing out. I'm just saying that because...
Yeah, I'm sorry, I just...
Try it the first time, right?
Yep, when you said there were a lot of kinks, I just, I just wanted to be sure that there weren't things that you had heard today. And we're certainly going to have things that we improve on every single day.
Okay. And another question that I had is, as far as extra space goes, and this may, this is just an off-the-wall, because I've noticed that in the utility bills sometimes, and it may be just the description, that we're, it looks like we still have bills going back to the old ALC rental area that we had in that mall. And maybe it's just because it's the way Excel does it, and I didn't know if that was, space was still at our disposal for any reason.
No, the, the space at Northgate Mall is, is not available to the school district anymore.
Okay.
So, our, our lease has expired.
Right.
It expired last year.
Okay.
And so, no, we, we're not able to access that space.
Okay. It just may be the way it's labeled. That's fine then. Thank you very much.
Yep.
Michael?
I would just like to share a few comments. If you would all indulge me, I had the opportunity today to visit just about every space we have with Lee and Dr. Stallow. And it's one thing to sit here and to hear about the reports and the good stories and the challenges. It's another thing to be on-site and experience it. And I'd just like to share that for the, for those who haven't gotten in yet and for those who might be listening. We know that our staff has been working tirelessly since March. And we have been asking for heroics from our administrative team. We have been asking for teachers, from our custodians, from child nutrition, from everybody. And I'm sure all of us have talked to people, staff, teachers this summer, and felt all the emotion and the frustration and the fear and the uncertainty and seeing the exhaustion that everybody from the superintendent's face, you know, from all these hours, through the whole admin team, all the way down to every staff member. I heard stories today, when we got to some of the schools, about people working 16-hour days, both days this weekend. I heard that there was a problem with whiteboards at a school last night, and so Marcus Malazo was in there with the principal till 10:30 last night, getting additional wiring in to make sure it worked. Getting access to one of the media centers was not available until about 48 hours before open. And that media specialist spent all of those hours, day and night, getting it ready for the students. But after all the fear and frustration and exhaustion that I have heard about, this is what I experienced when I got to the schools today. And I went through every elementary, both middle schools and the high school. I showed up, bristled, ready for, for everything to start crumbling. And I was greeted with the first elementary teacher, "We are so ready for this. We are so ready for this." And the joy in her face. And that rippled throughout the day. I was expecting to see kids with their masks off and fiddling and fidgeting and teachers in tears perhaps. It was not the case. Everybody was listening and focused. We saw, we had people stop us and say, they, like a staff person in an elementary school say, "My sixth grader came home and had their best day of school in their school career yesterday," or, or last Friday, "their best day of school." And we heard that throughout. The principals were calm, and they were taking care of everybody they needed. The teachers, who've been so concerned, their eyes were lit up when the teacher, when they saw the students coming to them. It was amazing to watch parents have those same emotions they have in a normal year, letting go of their kids, sending them off, getting a little misty. Some things don't change with that first day, that positive energy. I went from school to school to school. We got into classrooms. We talked to custodians. We went into the cafeterias. And it was the same thing. We have got a team and a family here that has put every ounce of energy into getting ready for this day. And I was, I was, I was one of those people that was moved to tears several times. And I'm sorry, I'm getting a little passionate again, but this is not what I expected to see as I came in. We have an amazing team. And the other side of it, in addition to all of these successes of making this day happen, we got to see some of these struggles, some of these things that will impact where we are on the dial. Whether we had the right spacing on the busing. We got to one of the middle schools and two teachers called in. They had been exposed as of last night and had to quarantine. And then, one had somebody else who was sick and couldn't teach. So, we saw that scramble to fill spaces, having to pull kids out of the cafeteria a little bit earlier than lunchtime was over, before new kids got in there. So, we didn't violate any of the spacing issues. There are so many wheels that are turning, and if one is just off, the other one gets thrown off. And I did not have a deep enough appreciation for the complexity of that with every discussion I've had this summer. I've been in here to the district office, I don't know how many times, going over plans, asking questions, talking to teachers and parents. But a slideshow wouldn't have done it for me, and I, I hope everybody has signed up for times to go in. Today, what I saw was both. The, the power of the prior-like family at every level blew me away, and thank you will never be enough. And understanding now that there is so much more to where we are and what, how we're able to serve those kids, how one little thing can ripple down. And that's one thing I just want to make sure our public understands. When the governor spoke to us earlier this summer and said, "We've got two sets of data. You have got your data that are your county-wide numbers and your internal set of metrics that have to do with your staffing, your capacity, and everything else. And that's what we're going to have to use." And I don't envy everybody. And every time I spoke to somebody who I thought must have been the department that worked the hardest, the next one I got to and heard the next stories, I thought, "Well, surely, this is the team who's burnt out the most, right?" So, I just, I just wanted to take a moment to acknowledge that I was amazed on both sides, how hard this really is and how powerfully our staff showed up at every level. And we have all got to be together to get through this. We have got to work together. And they were the best role models to me today. So, I just, thank you.
Well, I can't say it much better, Michael. It was an amazing day. Even, you know, when something did happen or they had to readjust, it was like, "We can do it." I mean, it was a very positive, "Let's get down and figure this out and do it." And it was awesome. And I was having a hard time getting my head around the, the students that were in the building with the teacher remote and how that all worked. And when we were up at the high school, we went into the gym and they were all spaced, and these kids were all working. They had headsets on, they were in front of a monitor, whatever device they had, and they were all learning. I mean, it was awesome to see. And it was different teachers, different subjects. But it was all happening, and there were a couple monitors around. And so, it, it really did help to be in the building to see what it's all about, because, you know, you guys have done a great job of explaining, but until you can actually experience what it is, that was very helpful. And of course, my favorite is the, the little kids, especially those kindergarteners coming in, and they're, they were not going to break any rule. And they were so exact on every single dot they had to be on and what side of the hall they had to be on, and, you know, when they get breakfast, when they get lunch. I mean, it was, it was really fun to see. So, I hope you all get the chance to get into the schools. And it was really positive. And that's not to say there's not going to be challenges, but I never had a sense that teachers were going to throw their hands up and say, "We can't do this." And including the staff as well, all the support staff. The custodians were even smiling after all the work they put in cleaning. They were happy. So, it was great. It was a good day. And I, I do want to say, I appreciate the presentation this evening. I appreciate that you're going into more detail as to what the complexities of this all are. I think our public needs to know that, our families need to understand as much as they possibly can, so that they can help, they can be helpful too in helping us get through this. So, I do appreciate the greater detail tonight on the presentation. So, thank you. Stacy?
I just have a couple of questions. You know, you talked about, I'm just, you know, the change and what it's, you know, I'm just thinking as a parent, you know, you see the number 18 or 19, and you think, "Oh, this may change," you know. But, you know, obviously, what you're saying is we need to have more, you know, probably a lower sustained number for a longer period of time. And then, we're talking about space constraints and that at some spots were pretty tight. So, I'm just wondering, and you're saying if, unless there's some change in what MDE is giving us for recommendations. So, it just begs me to think about, and I can't remember if this has been, it probably has been in some presentation we've had, but what type of data is going back to MDE as far as, are we sending stuff back to them? And so, I don't know, related to COVID, like, is there reporting going back to them to say, "Okay, we haven't had cases. The kids are 50%"? You know what I mean? Like, is there, because, you know, I know they aren't really super great at telling us when there's going to be like a change of the guidance, like, all of a sudden, it just pops up. And I'm just wondering, where would they get that feedback and that data to go off of? Because now, you know, we're in school now. We're seeing, we're going to start to see how their guidelines are working, and are they working the way they think they should be working? Is there a possibility that there could be change one way or the other? And what is that feedback, I guess, is what I'm somewhat interested in finding out. If there is, I mean, maybe there isn't anything been determined yet, but I would think, if I was MDE, I would want to know about how my guidelines are working, actually, you know, in the building. So, if there is change going to be happening, that they have some data off of that.
I think that's a, if I could jump in, and I, I, I think that's something that we have, that we definitely have an eye forward on, is, you know, as you looked at the slide and you saw below 20 for a couple periods of time, I think when we get to that level where, you know, as we're looking at that learning models and it says in-person, I think then it is a conversation with the MDE and Department of Health, saying, "Here's where our county data is. Here's what we're seeing. Here is what our factors are, and we want to make that shift." I think that's a decision made in consultation, because I know recommending going less restrictive than what the county is stating, you have to have a conversation.
Right.
With the Department of Health on that. And so, I think likewise, it's, 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 again, it's that conversation, say, "Here is our data. Here's the data from Scott County, and we want to move towards this." Because to move towards a less restrictive requires at least two weeks, two weeks of transition. And that two weeks of transition, if you're going to go in-person in the dial based on that data, then some of those capacity restrictions ease when you're in-person.
Oh, they do?
Yep.
Okay, that's what I didn't know, if that was already factored in.
If, if the numbers are such that you, that you could be on the, on that decision-making, stay safe Minnesota matrix in-person, yeah, there's a difference. And I don't have those in front of me, but there are some different requirements for in-person than there are from hybrid. And the in-person, Joe, maybe you need to help me with this, but I, I don't believe the 50% capacity is one of those requirements if the data suggests that we can be in-person.
Yeah. That's correct. If we were to move to in-person, we do not need to follow the 50% capacity component as far as a requirement. Other things such as the mask policy, things as far as attempting to social distance when possible, but not needing to necessarily keep all of those same restrictions.
But, but the data that we'll be using at that table of...
Is the Scott County.
It's Scott County, but I would think that we also have some influences, like what's happening in our buildings too. I mean, as, I mean, Scott County's big. I mean, I'm not saying that, but that if there is influence that's happening within our buildings, you know, specifically, I mean, that could go either way, obviously. We talked about that, but...
Yeah.
You know what I mean? And then, just one other question, just about the daycare thing, because I think you had said that we have three to four buildings, or three to four rooms in some of the buildings, or...
And I would say, every, every one of our elementary buildings is three to four rooms.
Okay, so, I'm just thinking at the transition, when, on October, you know, like the first quarter, is there, I mean, my concern would be, you know, I know we have to have some type of, we have to have program, correct?
Correct. We, we are required to provide, we are required to provide childcare at no cost to tier-one employees. And then, it is our hope that to offset some of those funds, we can also have a fee-based program.
Right.
For parents who also need it.
But would the possibility be also that if we have a demand for people wanting to come in on the DLA, that we need to use those classrooms?
Yep, that's something we'd have to look at.
Okay. All right.
Any other questions?
Mine was the same one that Stacy was just asking, kind of the, if, if we are all hopeful, right, that the next change isn't to distance, the next change is to more in-person. And it was, it really was the same question, what, what changes with the guidance and the capacity and, and those sort of things. I, the, the word that kept coming to mind as you guys were describing everything tonight for me was just fluid. I mean, it's just such a fluid situation. I hope, I hope that the public listening has, has gotten a little something, a, a, a greater understanding of the complexity. I, I guess my one question for any of you might be, what, you know, as you have had conversations with parents, with concerned parents, maybe share what has, what has put people the most at ease, or what has, what, what they've been the most surprised by that you've been able to tell them to make them feel, you know, feel a little more comfortable with where things are.
One of the things that I would say is, I think, I think helping people understand, especially those who are concerned with, with not being able to change every quarter, when we've been able to explain, when I've been able to explain, especially at the elementary level, that impact on other homerooms and other classes, there have been some parents who have said, "Wow, that, I, now I understand that." And I talked to a parent that said, "I would be okay with that." You know, so again, I think even given that situation where, where we were saying, you know, "We do not want a second grader to have three different classroom teachers in a given year," there might be varying perspectives on that. So, I would say that would be one example, you know. And, and again, I think, I think that, I think what, what I've asked for, when I've talked to parents, is, "Let's get the year started." To Jeff's point, let's see which kids we think are coming are actually there to see if there's some, anything that we can do with that balance piece. But to really help them also understand, and I understand for them, it's one student. If we're already maxed out at a middle school in five of the six hours of that class, it, one student does make a difference with that capacity.
My only other, just, I guess, two comments. Having a student this morning who started her first day of distance at the high school level, there was, there was a glitch this morning, and that was thanks to MediaCom. It had nothing to do with the high school. It was the fact that we had an outage in the neighborhood that made things complicated. And I just, I, I, I think that the rest of the day went well, and she was excited to be back, and so, that's good as well. I'm, I'm very hopeful. The work that you guys have all done is, you know, beyond reproach, in my humble opinion. And what I'm optimistic is going to happen is, come October, that's going to, that's going to be the stress point of people making another decision. But I have a hunch that by that time, an awful lot of questions are going to be answered by being there and by experiencing the process and see that things are running smoothly. And I'm hopeful that the vast majority of our parents are going to be able to take a deep breath and see that we were well-prepared. And their students, their children are going to be, A, safe, and B, able to learn.
Melissa, did you have anything to add?
Yes.
Go ahead.
I have three questions. So, first of all, let's talk about the critical grade group of K through five, elementary hybrid at-home day. I'm hearing from parents, if you can walk us through Terry, but I'm hearing from parents that the actual learning time is two hours.
For a distance learning academy student?
No, for the hybrid students, when they're at home, two days a week.
Jeff, I see you shaking your head. Do you want to speak to that one?
So, students at, at the elementary level, there are times that classroom teachers are setting synchronous times where they will connect with students that are at their hybrid home days while they're teaching with their class in-person. And then, that flips for when it's on A or B.
And I do want to add to that, Melissa. I know it wasn't part of your question, but we did get a chance to talk to one of the distance learning academy teachers today. And I think she, that was about the time she said, because that was one of our questions, you know, "How long are, are kids going to be in front of the screen?" And she said she was planning on about two hours also, that there would be a morning meeting and then a break, and then there would be time for math lesson, time for kids to work. She'd be available if they had questions. The same thing with reading. She'd do some small group work with students later in the day. But I believe that's what she said also, is about two hours of, of face-to-face with a student.
Wow. Okay, the second question that I had was related to the actual, since we have health tracking, so, and Mary asked this, so we have zero cases specifically in elementary and throughout the whole district of student, student body cases, right?
Correct. We've not had any reports of student cases.
And I think one...
And then, this is...
Oh, I'm sorry, Melissa, but one thing that, that Joe and I learned last Friday, this was very interesting, and it was, we heard it, we learned it from another school district, that, that it is not a confirmed case. Joe, you're going to have to help me with my memory on this, but my, my recollection is that it is not a confirmed case until MDE, or, I'm sorry, Minnesota Department of Health says that it's a confirmed case, regardless even if it, a doctor has said that. Joe, is that, was that accurate?
Yes. What they told us in the meeting on Friday was that we needed to make sure that we can receive the information from parents, we can receive their doctor's note. We'll want to start taking action at that point to make sure that we are being careful, we're figuring out and starting our contract, contract, contact tracing, sorry. However, the state does not consider it an official case until they have received their report, which is the, part of the reason why, when we look at some of those state numbers that the state releases, it's actually a two-week lag in that. And that's because of that case where we, they are waiting until they receive the notification, not just us from parents.
Thanks, Joe.
I have something.
Okay. Thank you for that.
I'd like to do a favor.
And then, my third question then.
Go ahead, Melissa.
Maybe I misunderstood you, Terry, but I thought about an hour ago or 45 minutes ago, when you were making your presentation, you said the goal is hybrid?
No, I said, I think one of the principles on the slide for the hybrid learning, one of the principles on, of hybrid learning is for students to be in, in school as much as possible.
Okay. But our real goal, our real goal is live. I mean, to get back to normal learning. We've lost so much educational time. I, just to piggyback on what Stacy was saying, I appreciate her comments about talking about what a transition plan might look like. I mean, what if we, for the necessity of live learning and for the mental health of our students, that we begin planning around that, and we swing back to the live learning for five days a week like our neighboring districts? You know, I, this is, this is what I think that I would implore my fellow board members to do, is just really roll up our sleeves and do the hard work of directing Terry to open up our school district. That would be this next week, she would meet with MDE. We have zero cases. We would go through that conversation, because again, you know, it's guidance, local control. We have the ability to guide our superintendent and to open our district. And I think that's what people, I, we're hearing loud and clear in our community forums, you know, and we plan to be open. We could open tomorrow, but I mean, we could for sure be open by Monday, October 5th. That's three weeks. That gives us the time to do our due diligence with MDE and get back on track with live learning. We wouldn't have to do the, the 50%. I think this is critical. This is our job as a board. Nothing is more important this year than getting our students in front of their teacher live learning.
Can I just add to that? Because, not, not really add to it, but just make a comment, because I am concerned, I've heard that from parents too. But, you know, when you're looking at the county data, we had 723 new cases reported as of Sunday, so it went back up. The last thing we want to do is ping-pong our families. And, and they're already going, you know, we've already had enough changes. We don't know where this thing is going to go, so why don't we just stabilize and make sure we're doing what we can do right now? And, you know, and it, things aren't perfect or whatever, no. I mean, ideally, you want things to go back to normal. But when I took a look at the numbers this morning, they went right back up. Now, they're not, they're not announced yet, because they're not normalized, they're not de-duped, the whole bit, just like the state has it going up and down. But, you know, we can't keep jumping back and forth. We've got to stabilize. We've got to follow the, the requirements and make sure that so much time has passed, so that we have those numbers consistently going down. Because when we make a change like that, we don't want to change back. And, and that's the thing that concerns me. So, I, Melissa, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not the person that's supposed to be answering your question, but that's, that's my feeling when, when I hear that. And that's what I'm also telling parents, that, "Hey, we're going to take the very strategic approach to this." Because, you know, it's one thing to, to, to want to be back in school. It's another thing to, to have even more disruption to everyone's life after they finally got it in one area. So, I mean, that's just, that's just how I feel about it. I don't know if anyone else wants to chime in.
I think the one thing we have to remember is, my understanding is that as long as we stay and follow the guidelines that have been given to us by the state and the we stay and follow the guidelines that have been given to us by the state and the county, we can do what we need to do to make that work. Once we go to a more inclusive model, I guess, more to the in-house type learning, the state gets involved and we have more direction from them. If we want to go to a tighter model, as in all distance learning, we can do that.
Correct.
That's my understanding of the way it works. So I, I would understand, Melissa, for you to say, and Stacy, that I believe the district will be looking at, you know, what our next steps are, when we can make that move. I don't think it's gonna be all of a sudden turn on the light switch, okay, now let's look. I think it's something that, from what I understanding, is that you're looking forward to different options as time goes on. I mean, that would be an expectation, I believe, of the board, and I think it's a reasonable one. And in our conversations, you've, you've alluded to that. So I guess that's my comment to you, Melissa, and I'm sorry, but I'm kind of going off here, I haven't given Enrique a chance to speak. So Enrique, did you have any questions?
No questions, just some comments. Knowing that we've just started back at school, we're likely not going to see that many positive COVID-19 cases amongst our students just yet. We're not going to see the after effects of that for two, three, maybe even four weeks before they start to exhibit symptoms. So it's a little bit premature to even think about what it would look like to get back into a full-time classroom setting. And then just kind of echoing your comment, Lee, that, yes, from a, from a learning perspective or how our structures operate, we can do things and be more restrictive than the state, we can't be less restrictive than the guidance that they have provided. We have to follow that specific criteria that they put into place for us to be able to operate with that. Even if the data starts to suggest that our district is performing better than the rest of the county, we still need to fit within the parameters that are provided for us. One last comment, talking with other parents, talking with peers of each one of my children, they comparing the distance learning academy now versus the emergency learning that we went through in March, night and day difference, so fantastic, wonderful applause for all of the work, all of the effort that went into preparing for this eventuality, for those that opted for the distance learning academy. I see a lot of engagement, and I believe it was Mr. Holberg that said earlier that this is not just a single microcosm, there are multiple ripples throughout the system that help make this happen, and then that also could help make it crumble. So there was a comment about MediaCom, and I believe MediaCom, Nuvera, and others have done the needful thing to improve their bandwidth, to create a better experience for all those working remotely, and all the students get to benefit from that as a result as well. So there are technological needs that have also come on board and come online to help make this a better experience, the direction, the communication, the clarity of the structure as it's laid out and as it's unfolding, because again, we're still fairly early on. All of these different things have led us to this place where we could be more successful, and certainly much more successful than just the few days of planning effort that we had in advance of the March 17th, March 18th closure.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any final comments? Stacy?
I just wanted to clarify, you know, my questioning, you know, I think where I was trying to go with my information or my question was basically that MDE and MDH is putting out a lot of information, in my opinion, in a short period of time for us to react to a lot of times. And I think, I just haven't heard anything about a feedback loop. I know having you having the meetings on Friday or Thursday or whatever, is some way of giving some type of feedback. I mean, it sounds like it's more consulting, but I'm just saying, I would just want to make sure that they're getting the feedback of how their guidance is working, as it is working within our system. I have every faith in the fact that Terry and the administration will make an appropriate change, whether, you know, is warranted or not. So that's just where I'm, I, I don't hear a lot of, like, us being able to give information to MDE and MDH as far as, hey, this is how this is really working, and, you know, if we're gonna be given that chance. So I think there needs to just be feedback going back that way, as far as what's happening.
Yeah, that's an excellent suggestion. You know, we still are having weekly superintendent and commissioner MDE calls with the commissioner, and while we're able to, you know, submit questions for that, I don't recall, I don't recall that, you know, there was a survey done at the end of last spring with MDE that said, how did we do and where, didn't we do well, but I've not heard anything about that. So I, I think, you know, that's certainly something I can pose to, to the commissioner and MDE about what their plan is.
Right, thank you.
To constantly assess the guidance and the support that they're given. Thank you.
Uh, Mary?
One more thing, I want to capitalize on something that Stacy did say earlier, and she did, i- in the process, Stacy did mention a transition plan. And even though I do believe it's premature, because we need to wait it out, I agree with everything Enrique said about the statements, that we're not gonna know for a while, but in order to prepare for that, I would like to ask that we have a transition plan that's ready to go, whether we use it or not. You know, that's another story, I hope we do, but I'd like to see some work done on that now, so we can move fluidly and seamlessly when, when the time comes.
Is that direction from the board?
It's, it's already somewhat planned out.
I think you've already started talking about that.
Yeah, I, I just, I want to be very clear with what the expectation is, if there's some thing that, I mean, that's what we are doing ongoing, is looking at the data, and as we transition, that's, that's the work we've done all summer, is to prepare for all three models. So I, I don't know exactly what that would look like, so I just need to be very clear if there's direction from the board about something that needs to be creative, that we might not have a document currently created around.
Wait, let me clarify.
Lee, this is-
I meant a transition plan back into normal, if we're gonna stagger it or whatever. I know we're looking at the numbers and the data, but having that, you know, get started, if it is, if it's there and you're already working on it, great, but if you're not, that was the suggestion that I had, so that we, we knew how to move the kids back into normal, particularly since they're gonna be, some of the elementary may be in two different teachers. You know, we have potentially different methods being taught, whatever works for each individual teacher, let's say in a ninth-grade core classroom or something like that, just to get the, it, it's a little premature to start doing it now, like this second, because everyone's overwhelmed, but I just meant that making sure that it's on the plan to get done.
So, so I just want to be really clear. My team, since before the last day of school, has been planning for in-person, for hybrid, and for complete distance learning, as well as creating an entire new distance learning academy. So in the back of our mind, always, and you've heard us say it, and you've seen the visual of a seamless dial. So that's exactly the work that we have been doing all summer. And so again, if there is direction and formal documentation of something that the board needs, I would need to know that. And otherwise, you can absolutely have confidence that should we continue to look at changing trends, we are constantly gonna bring updates to you, and we absolutely will bring transition plans forward as we get to a place. But if there's something else that the board needs to see differently, I would need to know that.
Lee, this is Melissa.
Yes.
Can I ask my fellow board members to think about the elementary kids and how critical their learning is right now? Can we give Terry direction to begin to look at opening just elementary school in three weeks, so we can make a, make those plans and put into motion things that will eventually happen, so that our families have that indication for their, for their family life and for their jobs? Those kids have to get back to live learning. We have no COVID cases. If I made a motion to, to do that, so that we could get that ball rolling, would, would, do we need a motion to do that in a second?
I believe that, first of all, I want to say that, that's all I think about, is getting these kids back into the school. It takes over my entire day. So I, I guess for you to say that maybe we're not is incorrect. And I believe that this district is already working at all the different levels of planning. I do not believe it needs to have any different direction at this point. They're working within the parameters, or we are all working within the parameters that we've been given by the state and the county numbers. And I do know that it's been worked on all summer, and it continues to be worked on. I don't think there's any reason to give any other direction. I'd love to see the kids all in school, for personal reasons, I've got three grandkids that would love to be in school every day, they can't wait to be there. So I'm a little bit offended that you would think that we're not giving them enough time to, not thinking of them, because it's important, every single person is-
I'm saying in three weeks, I'm saying that to make a plan for three weeks, and three weeks from today, on October 5th, that we get those elementary kids going, many districts just have their elementary kids live. We could do that. So at this time, I make a motion that we would direct Terry to begin to make things in motion, so that we could do that.
Yep. And I'm saying that that's already in place.
So what you're saying is that we're opening school for elementary on October 5th? I don't believe we've said that.
No, no, I'm not saying that. If you want to make a motion, you can, and I'll ask for a second, Melissa.
Yes, I would like to make a motion that we direct Terry to begin over the next three weeks to plan to open K5 for live learning on April 5th, three weeks from today.
Do I have a second? Seeing none, that motion fails. Terry?
Thank you.
I'd just like to say a couple other comments. Number one, we had a lot of live learning happening today, so I want to be, be very clear that the community understands that that happened today and that's going to continue to happen. And the other thing that I just want to remind, remind our, our boarding community is that, you know, this is a really personal thing for families, and we do have 22, almost 23% of our families that have chosen distance learning. So while I know there are families, and, and I think, Melissa, you said it's loud and clear that, that families want to be back in five days a week, and I know there are some families that want to, I just want to, to assure that there are also, we have, we know 22% or 23% of our families that have opted at this point in time for the distance learning academy.
I would, I would simply add that I believe that we have already provided that direction in the document that was approved, and the plan that was approved, and we will follow, we have given you the authority to execute that plan, and I have confidence that you will do it in the best interest of the school district and our students.
Michael?
I just want to make a point of clarification too, after being in the schools today, that it was suggested that maybe there's two hours of learning going on for virtual students, and that's not what's happening. What they're doing is limiting the amount of synchronous, in front of the screen, time that is happening, and then students step away, we got to observe some of this, and now maybe they're gonna do their reading assignment and answer their questions, then they're going to come back and the teacher's going to go over, what did you get from that? What are we working on? Where are the questions? So a lot of parents expressed concern that their kid not be placed in front of a computer for six to eight hours a day, right? And this is sort of like teaching in a classroom, right? The teacher gets up and does her teaching or his teaching, and then the students break into their groups, or they do, do their alone time, and they do their work, and they come back together and work with the teacher again. Well, that teacher works with other individuals or groups that need help. So I just want to be clear, the community doesn't think that distance learning or a hybrid home day looks like two hours of learning, and then you're playing on your, you know, electronic game set for the rest of the day. It's learning all day, it's a matter of how that teacher works or chooses synchronous and asynchronous time. So I just don't want that to be a misperception right now, that that's how learning is taking place.
If I could correct you, Michael, that is the perception the committee has.
It may be the perception, Melissa, but I witnessed it.
Two hours of learning, and I said, no, that couldn't be the case.
Yeah, I-
I think, we've, this was the first day, this was the first day of school, I think we need to give it some time. The perceptions out there that people may have, maybe they'll find out what the realities are as the week goes on and the next couple of weeks go on. This was the first day, and only half of our students that were, that are coming to school are in school today. So I think we need to cut a little slack here for everybody.
Thank you.
And I'm ready to move on. And if there's no objections, we're gonna move on to the budget and enrollment update. Julie?
Good evening, Chair Schimmick, Dr. Stallow, board members. Tonight, we're gonna talk a little bit about additionally, we've been talking about CARES funding for quite a while, and we will continue to talk about the funding. As we go through this, the first thing I do want to talk about, though, is our enrollment. As you know, we do receive our funding based on our enrollment numbers. Unfortunately, during this time, like many school districts in the state, we are losing students instead of gaining them. I think we were, we budget, the district budgeted for 125 additional students for this year. At one time in July, we had 80 students over that projection, and at this time, we are 89 students less than our 125 project, projection. And so unfortunately, I, I anticipate that we'll continue to lose our students, especially at the secondary level, like we always have in the past. We're planning for that, and so if that does happen this year, our budgeted numbers for enrollment will probably be 50, 60 students less than what we anticipated. So we'd start the year, or we would have a year of actual declining enrollment for this year. If that comes to fruition, we don't know what will happen here, we're still waiting for those October 1 numbers. Today is just the first day of school, as you had mentioned, and so we are looking at those numbers, and they are being adjusted on a day-to-day basis, and this was, as you can see, from 9:09. As we move into the funding for our CARES funding, there's a lot of different moving parts with this as well. We did receive some funding from Scott County, based on the number of students, K-12 students who are residents of Scott County and attend our school district. And so those, this funding is to be targeted to two spending categories, childcare for essential employees and technology needs to support our distance learning. We are able to utilize these funds for anything that was occurred after March 1st of 2020, and we have to spend this by November 30th of 2020. And so we are, we had some childcare costs from last year of $74,440 that we would like to utilize these funds for, and also from this September and October, we anticipate about $150,000 in childcare costs. The reason it only goes through October is because we're always two weeks' lag of paying our staff, and so if we pay them by November 15th, we have to notify it by November 30th, and so that's the latest that we could utilize those funds. And then we also have some additional technology needs for our distance learning academy, cameras and those types of things that are needed to support that program, and so we would like to utilize the remaining amount of money for that program. And as we go through the CARES funding, this is the Gears Esser Grant and Esser Grants, this is the piece of it that's, has the longest ability for us to spend these funds. And so as we go through this, and I'm gonna go to the next page, because we've talked about the revenue quite a bit, it's the first funding that we received, and it has the longest duration. And so we do have some unallocated funds here, and the reason we have them unallocated at this time is because we plan to try to use these after December 30th of this year, as much as we can. However, for the Esser, we did need those additional secondary monitors that was talked about earlier for staffing and additional elementary teachers. And so we know that we will have those teaching staff for this entire year, and those monitors anticipated for this entire year, and so we will need to utilize these funds after December 30th to pay for these staff. And so you can see that we have allocated those in the Esser funds and the Esser grants. And then we have the gear as unallocated in this, you know, so that's where we're at with this allocation. And then the coronavirus relief funds is our largest allocation at that $2.173 million. However, this also has to be spent by- However, this also has to be spent by December 30th. Our application is due in two weeks. And so we are working diligently to try and get everything entered in on that system and applied for. As you know, this timeline for this is a really quick timeline. We found out about it on August 11th, the allocation of the funds to the district. Our application is due by the first, and we have a short timeline to spend these funds. And so, and anything that's not drawn down by November 13th, then they're going to ask us, are we going to spend that money so they can reallocate it once again? So here's our proposal for the allocation. We do have some online curriculum. As we went through this, and this has changed even recently in the last couple of days, our online curriculum will include any curriculum for DLA that we need for Distance Learning Academy, but also staffing for professional development. And those types of things are all included in that $562,000. And so we are working really hard to make sure that our staffing are getting some professional development. And the best way to utilize that, we have some special ed needs for those special ed teachers and working on distance learning as well, and some EL costs that we want to include as part of that. And additionally, with the curriculum and the other needs that we have. Technology, we have ordered iPads in the amount of $500,000 to help backfill. We still haven't received some of the iPads and the tech Chromebooks back from some of our families from last year to redeploy them. And so we are short of our, you know, of the technology needs that we have. We won't get these iPads until sometime in October. Hopefully, we're on the list, and so we hope that we'll receive those in a timely manner. And then again, we also have some additional technology needs for Distance Learning Academy. And then we have some staffing, nursing needs that we needed this summer to make sure that we were complying with all the requirements. You see some additional elementary staffing here and our secondary staffing for those monitors. Those are also listed here to make sure that we're covering all of our costs. Tier one childcare, this covers an additional month after the county money runs out. And then we have some operational costs as far as our HVAC systems at Glendale, PPE. And we've listed the Minnesota State High School League here, and again, that's changed. That is something that isn't allowable under, we found out just recently, it's not allowable under this, but it is allowable under the Gears funding. And so I don't know how many have heard, but the Minnesota State High School League, because they get all of their money from state tournaments. And so they are losing quite a bit of money. So they're requesting those funds come from the school districts to pay additional costs. And because it is strictly due to COVID, they are saying that that could be allocated under the Gears. So that'll be some change, but it is part of our total allocation under everything that we're hoping to cover here. And then we also have some supplies and equipment from Child Nutrition Services, just trying to help us to, with all of the meals that we're serving to students, both in school and for those in distance learning or in the hybrid, they're not attending school that day. So we are anticipating to spend the whole entire 2.0, almost $2 million. Any questions about this?
Just one, just on the iPads?
Yes.
So I know we said the students all have theirs, right? Right, students have them? Yeah. So I know we have to use staffs, or turn, some staffs, then they have to turn them back in or something? So would they be getting some back if they needed it or not?
That is a discussion that would have to be held. I know that we have a lot of iPads that are not able to be upgraded.
Oh, yeah, they're old, yes.
The old iPads that some students still have. So right now, the intent is that all of those iPads are for student use.
Okay, so the staff's not getting it back?
Not at this time.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Mary?
I've got a couple of questions. First of all, the online curriculum. Did we actually purchase a curriculum package that's out there for that? Or how did that work?
There's a lot of different curriculum that we've needed so that we could offer our classes online, either for the Distance Learning Academy or for either the hybrid, so that students were able to access all of our curriculum online. And I don't know if Jeff has a better answer than I do for that. But I know as we talked through all of these, it was making sure that students had access electronically to all of these systems, all of the curriculum that they have need to have access for. And it's mainly secondary, but there is some elementary as well as middle school.
So these are licensed online software packages that we purchased? Okay. And when you say online curriculum, there's a lot of online curriculum, obviously, for homeschoolers and stuff like that that come in whole packages? And I wasn't sure if we did one of those, or if it's a whole bunch of different pieces?
Different pieces.
Okay, okay. And then I have the same question as Stacy about the iPads, because I am concerned that the teachers don't have them. But you, Julie, in the FLEUR meeting, you had also indicated when I asked the same question, that the teachers are given MacBook Airs?
Every teacher in the district that is part-time or higher FTE has a MacBook Air.
Okay.
Every teacher in the district has that. If they're in the district, they have a desktop in their classroom as well.
Was this in addition to the iPads that they had before?
Yes.
Okay.
They got those, they got those at the beginning of last school year. And then we allowed them to keep those iPads for the year. So we wanted to give them a chance to learn how to use the MacBook Airs and to, you know, figure out what, how to use those in a way that they would normally be using the iPads. And then asked after this year that they turn those iPads in so that we could deploy those to students.
Okay. And I want to be, you know, I understand that the teachers want both. And when you're managing multiple groups, hybrid A, hybrid B, and potentially distance learners for the secondary, I can't live without two or three computers myself, and I'm not even doing that at one time. So I get it. I wish there was some way we could potentially make up and get them an additional set of equipment to help them in this, particularly during this time. Is that possible? Do we have any funds left to do that?
Not at this time, unless there's additional funding coming or it gets reallocated to our district, that we would have the ability to purchase something. And it, you know, it could possibly be an opportunity at that point. I think right now, our biggest need is making sure our students in our district have a reliable piece of equipment that they can learn from. So that's what we're, our highest priority of our technology is going towards that and hotspots. So children have the ability to have something online that they can learn from, and it's reliable, and it can be updated. And at this point, we are making sure that those students are there. But we, that's why we ordered the iPads, is so that we could make sure that those students have something that can be updated.
Understand. I just, I'm thinking about the teachers too. And then, of course, you know, like I repeat this over and over again. I've seen the students try to type in papers on an iPad with no keyboard and a few other things. It's painful to watch. I can't imagine what they're going through. So anything we can do to get them the tech that they need is something that I'm definitely in support of. Another question I had, though, is about mental health services counselors and potentially even in-home visits or something like that for the kids with IUPs and 504s. Is that being addressed here at all?
Yes, that's part of the curriculum, even though I said it's part of the curriculum, but we are, have some special ed needs. So there's about $100,000 in that funding right there that's for EL services. It's for special ed services. It's for that type of need. That's for those students that just came to us in the last couple of days, that they said we'd rather flip-flop those funds from being curriculum into being these funds. And so we've allowed that to happen because that's the highest priority need. That's coming back from our staff and our administrators, as that's what the needs are. So we are trying to be as flexible as we can before we, as we prepare this application and as we try to do these things, making sure that we are meeting the needs of all of our staff and students.
And just to clarify the staffing, because I believe Jim already answered this, but because this is temporary, it's money that has to be spent in a certain way. Is, am I assuming right that the elementary staffing, the secondary staffing on here are also at-will? That we're spending this on for the CRF?
The teachers would not be.
Okay. So how does that work when we pay them a salary and yet everything has to be spent before a certain time?
That's why it's spread across the CRF funds and the Gears fund, because the Gears funds last until 2020. So some of the funding is coming from Gears, some of it is coming from CRF, and we're splitting it.
Okay, that makes sense. And just to ask, one more question, because I know that we've never been, I know we have the cross subsidy. There's always all those issues with that. But, you know, the parents with kids with disabilities, IEP and 504 plans that need the extra help, and they're doing distance learning for any reason. I understand that the state is not going to fund us to have home visits or to help the parents out in any way. Is that a correct statement?
I don't believe that is, but I, I think that we are doing everything that we can to make sure that any student in our district that's, that's distance learning, if they, if there's a need that we have, we are trying to meet that need, whatever it may be. Now, I don't know specifically, because I haven't been, that's a question I haven't been involved with, but I'm sure that our special education staff could answer that and get back to you on that.
Okay. I just don't know if any of the funds here, because I mean, that's, that's been a, when I see the lack of pairs and stuff like that, I am concerned. I'd like to see the, you know, the funds also should be on that. And I'm just going to reiterate that the HVAC on Glendale, I would be concerned that it doesn't really qualify for this, although I'm glad we can get it done because we need it. I am concerned that it doesn't meet the requirements that I read in the CRF. So we'll see how that goes on the application. Any other questions?
Yeah, this is Melissa. Question for Julie on curriculum. You said online curriculum, just under $600,000. Mary asked about some programs. So that's just a variety of online programs?
It's a, they are curriculum that can be offered both online and through a textbook, is my understanding. But some of it is simply online as well, just because we're trying to offer it for our Distance Learning Academy. So they're trying to make sure that students have access to it in a multitude of ways.
Okay, thanks. And then what part of that might be for the equity training with Dr. Shrocky Holly?
None of that is, as far as I'm aware.
Okay. And then, so the, got what, 2.2, almost 2.2 million? Is there any way that we can use? I see that we've used some of that money for Greenwood HVAC. We've recently gone through staffing losses of 10 and a half FTEs. We've got 3.2 million in debt. Can we apply any of it to that?
No.
Looks like we're doing it for staffing in other areas.
Only for new staffing. It cannot be in our current budget. None of this can be in our current budget. It has to be for new staffing, which our new staffing is being used at the elementary level for our Distance Learning Academy. And then the 12 monitors are being used at our secondary level, both at the middle school and the high school for when we are offering those classes and the teachers are unable to be at the school.
Okay. And then for Child Nutrition Services, $100,000, what sort of things do we have there?
That is to help us to offer and to serve all of the students under the age of 18 in our district that would like a school lunch and breakfast. We spent quite a bit of money last spring to do this. And we now are trying to serve both in school and try and serve to those families that aren't in school. And so we have a lot more need for equipment and materials so that we can offer it in both areas.
Okay, thank you, Julie.
Okay, thank you, Julie.
Welcome.
Enrique, have any questions? Pardon? Okay, does he have any questions? I can see him, and he's not waving at me, so I think we're good.
No, we're okay, thank you.
I can finally see you, Enrique. Okay, we'll move on to the annual Constitution Week proclamation, which I'll read. Constitution Week 2020. Whereas September 17th, 2020 marks the 233rd anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas it is fitting and proper to officially recognize this magnificent document and the anniversary of its creation, and where it is fitting and proper to officially recognize the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion. And now therefore, we, the School Board of Prior Lake Savage Area Schools, to hereby proclaim September 14th to 18th, 2020, to be Constitution Week within the Prior Lake Savage Area School District with the observance on September 17th, 2020. I urge all citizens to join me in recognizing Constitution Week to reaffirm the ideals of the framers of the Constitution, the framers of the Constitution had in 1787. Okay, and our next is the annual Columbus Day resolution. And I will read that as well. Be resolved by the School Board of Independent School District Number 719, State of Minnesota, as follows. That Columbus Day, October 12th, 2020, not be considered a holiday. The regular meeting of the School Board of Independent School District Number 719 can be held and business conducted as usual. Do I have a motion to approve this resolution? Go, Mary? Second?
Second.
Second.
Jonathan? This is a roll call vote. Mary?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Aye.
Stacy.
Aye.
Aye.
Johnson. Enrique?
Aye.
Okay. That motion carries 7-0. Thank you. Okay, now we'll move on to policy. Our first one is an informational, I'm not sure what you call it, informational policy?
It's an adjustment. It's an adjustment, is I think what it is.
I'm turning it over to you.
That sounds great. What we're looking at for this school year is Policy Title IV deals with, provides the guidance for electronic, for the distribution of flyers that we often put in take-home folders and things like that for our students. So because of the handling of paper and some of the COVID guidelines and for the safety of our students and staff, we would like to suspend that for the 2020, 2021 school year and just make sure that all of those approved flyers are shared electronically with families.
And electronically is used in the policy, so there's no change?
Correct, thank you.
You're just highlighting that?
Yes, yes. So there is, there is no change to the policy, the procedure, it's just the fact that we will not use those paper copies, as has been our practice in the past.
Okay. Anybody having questions about it? Okay.
Thank you.
Makes sense. Move on to first, reading of policies. Email communications is not a policy, it's a protocol. We've not had any change to it, and I would like to suggest that we approve it this evening. If there's no reason not to, I would take a motion to approve this protocol. So moved by Michael, second by Mary. Any comments or questions?
Lee, I do have one comment. Because of the virtual meeting format that we have with limited people, the open forum, I think I would like to see that taken off onto a study session so we can discuss how we can allow the public to do open forum in this virtual meeting format, because that is kind of embedded in some of these areas of the policies. So I just want to, I'm taking that out now, because it's going to come up again in another policy that we're going to talk about, which is referenced in here, which is Policy 203. I'm fine with the communication protocol here. I just wanted to make that statement.
Okay.
Since we reference Policy 203 in this particular communication protocol.
Okay, just, just for clarification, at this time, anyone who wants to have something read during open forum has consented in to Martha, I believe, by noon the day of our meeting. And it would be read here. So that is publicized. So that is our option right now for open forum, short of bringing somebody in the room, which we're not prepared to do at this point.
I understand that. We haven't, well, we have been communicating that as a temporary potentially, but also to make sure that the public is aware that they are more than capable of coming in to speak, not here physically, but actually submitting something in writing to have it be read. Or potentially, if we could talk about in a study session, maybe having a forum where somebody could actually speak to the board, you know, in their language or in their words. Not a lot of people.
Well, it is in their words. I'm not writing it. It's their letter.
Yeah, not a lot of people write it formally. Sometimes they just do an outline and get up and speak, and they don't feel comfortable with that. So I just want to know if we can bring that off into a study session, since it looks like this is kind of going to be the modus operandi for some time. So that's just my suggestion on that.
Okay, I'm just trying to figure out where it fits in. Okay, I, I'm just trying to figure out where it fits in with the open forum, but I, I get what you're, with the policy.
Some Policy 203 and the, and this references it, right.
But not the protocol, okay. So I have a motion and a second, if there's no other comments. Mary?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, see, aye?
This is, this is, this is Melissa, I have a comment.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yep, we're in the middle of the vote right now.
I was trying to get your attention, to let you know I have a comment.
Okay.
But you can't see, we can't see you, I don't know if you know that, but we can't see you.
Go ahead, Melissa.
And I don't know what's going on, because my camera is live, so it's something on your end.
Go ahead, Melissa.
On the communication topic, on email communication, we talk about district-wide theme for this year of voices. And this statement on the second page, where an individual board member receives a communication, is not sure if anyone else has received it, board members encouraged to contact the director of communications and to copy board chair. Is, the word comes to mind silence. In the spirit of, in the spirit of teamwork, I would ask that my fellow board directors come together to really support a communication policy that more fosters not silence, but the ability of all teachers and all parents and all community members to be able to share their voices. We've got staff that have reached out to us, concerned that if they communicate with a board member, that the board member will copy the superintendent, who is their ultimate supervisor. And that is really silencing and stifling the confidence that board directors have in the community. We are the voice of the community, of parents and teachers and so on. So I would encourage us to eliminate that line.
I'm not sure which line you want, the whole paragraph? I'm not sure which, which line you want to eliminate.
Right, they're, they're asking, the community is asking for a board member, they're bringing conversation to the board member. We're not talking about if it's a, it's a, an issue with a student and data privacy. We're talking about someone in the community has an opinion, and that's why they reached out to the board. We shouldn't have to co, to copy the superintendent or the board chair. We are seven duly-elected individuals, as all school board members are in the State of Minnesota.
Michael?
I believe our, like, the MSBA training goes through these different protocols. And if they, if a community member.
And again, MSBA is a, is a guidance.
I mean, she's got to allow other people to speak.
Melissa, please let Michael finish.
So from the, the training that, all the training that they give, there are certain protocols that you follow, whether a, a person, you know, connects with you in the grocery store and says, hey, I'm concerned about so-and-so, you help them find the right person to talk to, correct? You say, well, that would be an issue to, you know, talk to your principal about. Or if you don't get an answer from your principal, the next person, the same in an email protocol. And I looked at some other district policies about this sort of thing. Now, for one thing, if a, if a community member writes to you through your school board email, that's, that's, that's public information, period, right? That's requestable. Anybody in the community can see what's in there, right? And there's less formal communication. So you might have a friend who calls and says, I have this problem. But MSBA would direct us then to say, you don't jump over the teacher and the principal and the, you know, director of curriculum and the superintendent and go to the school board to resolve that problem. You can listen to their feedback, but then our goal is to help them find the right resource. And if they don't get what they need from that resource, to help them scale up. And so I'm not, I'm not sure what the concern is about having a community member talk to a board member in an official email format, where you wouldn't try and direct them with, with they taught, if I'm understanding correctly, is like, say it's a problem with the school building, you say, you need to talk to this principal, and I'll also let the superintendent know it's an issue. Now, if it's a, it's a concern that they're worried about the superintendent or something, and they're talking to you as a friend, you know, I don't even, I'm not even sure what's motivating behind the idea to take this off. But our goal is not to solve the problems of the community, it's to direct them to the people in the following order that we've been trained, who can help them solve that problem. Does that make sense?
Well, I'm not looking to solve any problems of the community. I'm just looking at a paragraph that says that we're supposed to copy the communications director and the board chair. And they're reaching out to us with a comment on an issue. That's completely different, it, it doesn't delineate the two. Obviously, we know, we send to the board, to the principal of the building, or we send them to Terry or whatever. I'm talking about someone has feedback. And they're reaching out to us, send us an email.
And what is your?
We are not obligated to copy the board chair and the superintendent and the communications director.
Jonathan, you had a comment?
I was just going to say, Melissa, I would suggest if you have a specific change that you would like to make to the policy, make a motion, and then we can decide what happens from there.
Well, technically, this isn't a policy.
To the protocol.
It's not in the policy format, so.
If you would like to make a change, please make a motion.
I make a motion that we eliminate paragraph under Communications Protocols, bullet point, the second half of bullet point number five.
Do I have a second?
You got to read it.
Seeing none, that motion fails. Again, we're in the middle of, pardon?
Go back to the vote.
We'll go back to the vote. I'll restart that vote, and it's roll call. Mary?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Stacy?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Melissa?
Nay.
Enrique?
Aye.
That motion carries 6-1, thank you. Now we'll move on to, this is the first reading of Policy 203, School Board Operating Norms. There's been no change since our last discussion. Does anyone have any comments? I don't see any, Enrique, Melissa? Okay, that, there's one, Mary?
So just to, just to, first of all, the protocol, the communication protocol, I didn't have an issue with. I think that's appropriate. But we still have the language in here of copying the superintendent when we get problems coming in. And that could potentially, and we talked about this last time, this could potentially be an issue, particularly if we don't mention something like a grievance procedure or something like that in 5.6. And we talked about this.
You're referring to 5.6 right now?
I just want to clarify, which one you're? In 5.6 of Policy 203. And then again, in Policy 203, I believe we also talked about the open forum, and I just wanted to just say, okay, we, we just need to make sure that we're good with that, with the, with the current protocol, and maybe have a discussion at the study session to make it as easy as possible and as palatable as possible for the community to come in and speak to the board in a way that best fits everybody's needs.
Okay, this is the first reading, it will come back during the work session, so we can wrap it up then, the open forum. Did you have a comment in reference to 5.6, Stacy, before I speak?
I just want to reread it again, so I make sure I get. So this is when board members receive questions or concerns from members of the community or employees, they shall direct the individual to the appropriate administrator in the district and the superintendent. And so the concern is, the and, the or is fine? Well, the primary concern, of course, is the, the role of the board is oversight. So if, if somebody has a concern that they bring to us, so let's say has to do with one of us or the superintendent, then I think this is going to follow on with the grievance procedure to make sure that it's being handled correctly and that we do provide, we do have a role here for governance and oversight, and we, and we actually abide by that. And that's kind of where the and came in from last time's communication too, about how to deal with that type of situation. So if we're going to discuss this at a study session, then I think that that needs, we've already got it highlighted for a change, we've already had some discussions, then I'd like to bring that up again and make sure that we're all good with it, and potentially bring it up with revisions to 204, which we have already somewhat discussed with the, and I believe that, Lee, you sent out the, the, the draft of a new Policy 204 to other board members.
I actually sent out your copy, it's not a draft of our copy, of our policy.
A draft of my copy, okay. But you're saying and specifically as it relates to grievances towards board members or the superintendent, not anything else?
But this, this doesn't have anything to do with grievances at this, on this policy.
That's why I just want to clarify. It's, it's, in order to facilitate constructive resolution of problems at the most appropriate administrative level, and board members receive questions or, and concerns from members of the community or employees, they direct the individual to the appropriate administrator and the superintendent. There are some things that probably shouldn't be copied to the superintendent in that case, depending on what the grievance is or the concern or the question.
You're putting grievance in here, and I'm not seeing grievance.
No, it's not.
An example for me is that it would be, if there's a concern, and we've had a number of them from parents in the last couple of weeks, and if it has to do with their child and what kind of learning they're getting or what kind of grade they're going to get, my response is going to be to direct them to their principal.
Correct.
But I also need to copy the superintendent, because she's my employee. The principal is not my employee, and I cannot give the principal direction, work direction. But I can give work direction to Terry, and she can make sure that that principal is following through. I believe that that's what the, the spirit of this comment is. I don't believe it has to do with any grievance or improper actions by an administrator.
I believe.
So maybe we're interpreting that statement differently, but there's nothing in here about a grievance.
Well, what I'm saying is, is that when somebody comes to us, let's say, with a concern, okay, that there are.